Welcome, everybody. I hereby call the October 2019 Special Town Meeting to order. I'm your moderator, Sean Keely. Nice to see you all. This is a great crowd, wonderful crowd. This may be bigger than some Maytown meetings, so welcome. Thank you for coming. If we could please begin the meeting as we always do with a Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll please arise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Since we last met, we've lost a few faithful public servants, and I just want to take a moment to remember them. First of all, Robert Brown, our Highway Surveyor, Laura Haas, Ronald H. Herlett, Mary Lyon, Patricia Straight, who many of you checked into previous town meetings with, and Sheila Ward. If we could just have a moment of silence and remember their contributions to the town. Thank you. If we could also have a moment of silence, we had a tragic loss not long ago, an eight-year-old girl who tragically died, Annabelle Earl. If we could please have a moment of silence for her as well. Thank you. So before we get going with the business of the meeting, we have a presentation to be made by Josh Cutler, our state representative. Or do you want to wait for Senator Brady? Wait a few minutes? That's great. We can do that. I will take care of some housekeeping then. With the town meeting, I have to announce the rules that will be governing the town meeting by. I'll be governing it by Town Meeting Time, which is the official parliamentary handbook for the Massachusetts Moderators Association. And, let's see. We have a quorum. As of a few moments ago, we had 165 people in attendance. So that's a terrific number for an October town meeting. Also, as we're spending money tonight, I can announce the following numbers, because this is always asked. Available funds as of September 30, 2019. Free cash, $1,664,097. The stabilization fund stands at $1,256,343. The school stabilization fund is at $135,992. Water surplus has $885,493. The recreation retained earnings account has $65,205. And the solid waste retained earnings account has $74,323. So those are the amendments -- or, I'm sorry. Those are the available funds that we have at the moment. Another piece of business along with the rules, what I often -- or what I always ask town meeting, is if we could take a vote allowing me to judge the quantum of vote on a voice vote. That was a clunky way of saying. If we need a nine-tenths vote or a two-thirds vote, and everybody votes yes, but one person says no, I get to say, "Yeah, I believe that's nine-tenths or two-thirds." If somebody disagrees with me, then by all means, we'll move to a counted vote. But it just helps speed things up. So I would make a motion to a --
Oh!
Thank you. Can always rely on you, Mr. O'Sullivan. So all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Thank you very much. So with that, I believe we should -- we'll have the presentation in just a moment, and we'll move on to some of the articles so that we're not wasting time. Article one. Mr. Blouse.
I move in common vote to raise and appropriate $3,127 and transfer $3,737.23 from Transfer Station retained earnings to pay unpaid bills from fiscal year 2019.
Seconded, Mr. Blouse.
There are a few unpaid bills from various departments which were received after the end of fiscal year 2019.
Any questions or concerns? Seeing none. Once again, this requires a nine-tenths vote. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it by a nine-tenths vote. Article one is adopted. Article two, Mr. Hickey.
I move the town vote to raise and appropriate $127,902 and transfer $150,000 from free cash to supplement appropriations previously voted at the annual town meeting of May 2019 for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2019, for various town departments as printed in the warrant.
Seconded. Seconded, Mr. Hickey.
The purpose of this article is to supplement the number of line items in the current fiscal year's budget, FY '20, in order to fund the number for additional expenses. A detailed handout will be presented to the voters at town meeting outlining the details of these expenses.
Any questions or concerns? Oh, Ms. Marini, could you please come to the microphone? And although I've known Ms. Marini for many years, could you please state your name and address for the record?
Kathleen Marini, 181 Union Street. I would like to know why the Finance Committee voted not to recommend.
Mr. Sullivan.
The Finance Committee voted not to recommend based on the article as a whole. We took specific issue with line item number four and line item number 10. And if you'd like, I can go into further discussion.
Actually, what we'll do, if I could, just like the Maytown meeting with the budget, I'm going to read each item number. And if anybody would like to discuss the item further, please yell "hold," and we'll come back to it. All right? Otherwise, it'll be accepted. Item one, accepted. Item two, accepted. Item three, accepted. Item four, item four is held. Item five, accepted. Item six, accepted. Item seven, accepted. Item eight, accepted. Item nine, accepted. Item 10, item 10 is held. Item 11, accepted. All right. So we have, item four has been held. Mr. Mitchell, would you like to say something?
Would you like to ask a question?
Oh, would somebody like to ask a question on item four? Oh, Ms. Marini.
Could we go back to number two?
Sure. We'll consider item two held. Well, then, why don't we start with item two? Does anybody have a question or concern on item two?
Item two is not recommended by the board.
Mr. Sullivan? Would you like to talk about item two?
Are you speaking about line item two or the entire article number two? Because the only items we did not recommend are item number four and item number 10. You're welcome.
Do you have any other questions on item two? No. Seeing none, all those in favor of item two is printed, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Item two is accepted. Item four, any questions or concerns? Yes, sir.
This is Richard Edgehill, 115 South Street. This is a little vague. You don't recommend it. How about an explanation for this audience? That's all. Explain it, why --
Absolutely.
Well, maybe the police should do this, is why they need it.
I'm sorry. So do you want an explanation as to why we didn't recommend it, or why it's been put in?
Why they need it. There must be a reason why.
Why they put it in here?
Mr. Mitchell?
Okay, this is --
I'm sorry.
We're going to be supplementing the dispatches with police officers. So we're not adding additional salaries. We're just exchanging positions. So we're exchanging the job description and the job title. So this money here will supplement the difference of that. We've been talking about this internally over the past year and a half with the new regional dispatch coming up. And we challenged the police chief when he came to us and said he needed this. And we've had several meetings with Madam Chair, Kemet, Todd, and also Mary. So this is what we need, these funds. Also, a portion of these salaries will be supplemented by a grant that we'll be getting from 911.
Mr. Sullivan?
When we looked at this and considered the savings that we were pulling in from the regionalization process, we looked at the potential budget cycle for next year. Over the past few years, we've looked, as a committee, to only add positions when we believed there was a long-term success. We were hesitant to add positions going into what could be one of the most difficult budget cycles that Hanson is going to face next fiscal year and have to cut money out of that salary. Because once that money goes in there, if an additional police officer is hired, we don't want to have to trim the budget down to remove a police officer. But, you know, we've done very well, the department heads have done very well about managing their personnel. I think all the departments, we had gotten up to a certain point where, you know, the feedback we've gotten is that they're fully staffed. They're getting rid of, you know, we're going to a municipal dispatch, and I'm sure the Chief of Police can discuss that in greater detail. But we're looking at it as a whole going forward. And from our standpoint, it wasn't a feasible monetary decision going forward for the town.
Chief Mix?
Thank you. So July 2020, we will be going to Duxbury Regional Dispatch. Currently, we have funded five civilian dispatchers. That's who answers our 911 calls or the business line. When we go to Duxbury, the choice was shut the lights off in the station, and you can pick up a phone or look at a video screen, and somebody in Duxbury would talk to you, or you could have a police officer there. So we're going to do away with the salary of five civilians and replace that with four sworn officers between now and during next fiscal year. The reason that I'm asking now to supplement these two people is to hire a police officer. We used to have, I mean, literally hundreds of people apply for one position. I'm getting 40, 50 applications for one position. When I hire somebody to train them, not only through an academy, if we have to send them through the academy, but if I have a trained officer I'm bringing in, there's at least a three-month in-house training period to get them up to speed. If I don't have people to staff the station July 1 of 2020, I have to fill it with either overtime or take officers off the road. Neither of which, I think, is acceptable. The overtime alone would be somewhere around $32,000 a month if I filled every shift with overtime, and that's the average overtime. So you're doing away with five for four.
Mr. Edgehill.
That's all they wanted was an explanation. Public safety first.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of item four is printed in the warrant, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Item four is accepted. We have item 10. Any questions or concerns? Same question, Ms. Marini? Nope. All those -- oh, Mr. Edgehill. Oh, I'm sorry. Take your time. Mr. Edgehill will fill the air.
This is on the septic system?
Yes.
What's the problem with paying that off?
That was my question, is why they --
If you could just state your name and address, please.
Joan Frazetti from Elm Street, Hanson.
Thank you.
Camp Kiwanis is an enterprise fund. By definition, it is supposed to operate independently. That was our decision. It's not operating independently.
The enterprise fund doesn't do that. That's incomplete. The enterprise fund pays for what it can pay, and then it's living through taxation to the town if it doesn't make a substantial amount of money. And there was also money put aside twice over the years for the septic system. $75,000 was supposed to have been put into retained earnings. Where did that money go to? We have no idea, because the retained earnings that has paid for the septic system in the last two years was from retained earnings and what we had on file.
By definition, it's an enterprise and supposed to be self-sufficient. What happened in the past, happened in the past. I can't control that. Those are closed budgets. It's already done. It's already gone by. I can only deal with what we're dealt with right now. So I'm sorry, I'm not going to debate it. I'm just giving you what our decision was. The town can vote however they want to, but I'm not going to debate the semantics of an enterprise fund and who's supposed to pay right now.
Well, out of MGL Chapter 74, Section 53F, one half, it does state that if we don't make enough money to pay for something, then it's supposed to be done through taxation. And that's right in the warrant. And I have a copy of it to show it to you. But let's put it up to vote and let the town people vote to see whether they want to put it into the vote.
So I have to take that as a motion to proceed to a vote. All those in favor of item 10 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it. Item 10 is accepted. So now, on Article two as a whole, any questions or comments on the article as a whole? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article two signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article two is adopted. And we'll just take a moment right now. I see we have a couple of special guests. Just wanted to welcome our state representative, Josh Cutler, and our state senator, Brady. Thank you for coming tonight. And they have a presentation to make along with the Board of Selectmen. So I'll call Chair Kemet up to the podium along with our representatives.
I'd like to call Jerry Luzo and Teresa Santoluccia up to the stage, please. Shall I read first? Greetings. It's good to see you lovely people. This is a citation from the town of Hanson. Be it hereby known to all that the Hanson Board of Selectmen takes this means to express its most sincere appreciation to Mary Grett Luzo, an official recognition of one who has gone too soon but has left the town of Hanson and the world a better place. The Board of Selectmen in the Hanson community wishes to posthumously acknowledge the service and commitment of Mary Grett Luzo from educating our youth not only in the classroom but within her church, 4-H, numerous civic organization, and as a library trustee. Her love of people, family, and community was ever present and lives on today. The Board also wishes to thank the Luzo family for selflessly sharing such a remarkable woman who has given so much of herself to others. Her years of dedication and commitment to family, friends, and neighbors has distinguished her as an outstanding citizen of our town. The certificate of appreciation honoring Mary Grett Luzo's years of service is issued by the Hanson Board of Selectmen in acknowledgement of a life well-lived and loved. We sincerely thank you and express our deepest gratitude and appreciation for your dedication and energy to the town of Hanson which misses you deeply. And testimony whereof, we, the town of Hanson Board of Selectmen, sign our names officially on the seventh day of October in the year of our Lord, 2019.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for letting us come forward. On behalf of Senator Brady, myself, I had the distinct pleasure of knowing Grett Luzo in many levels. She was very kind to me personally. In fact, I think one of my first introductions to the town of Hanson was at the Red Acres Farm by the Luzos. So it's a great loss, obviously, to the community, to Luzo family, to all of us. And I would just like to, if you'll indulge me for a moment, acknowledge some of the wonderful ways that Grett contributed to the community. Of course, Margaret, we've known as Grett, was born August 25, 1944. She moved with her family to Red Acres Farm in 1950. She attended Sacred Heart Elementary and High School in Kingston, where she was a senior class secretary. Grett earned a bachelor's degree from the University of Rochester and a master's in education from State College at Boston. On Christmas Day, 1970, she married, and this is in quotes, "her favorite husband," Jerry Luzo.[1277.32][1277.32](Laughter). She's going to give me a hard time about that later. And together, they had two daughters and two sons, including Teresa, who is standing here, who contributes in so many ways in her own to the community of Hanson. Grett was a dedicated lifelong teacher on many levels and in a variety of settings. She was a member of the Hanson Kiwanis, an advisor for the Kiwanis, and sponsored the Middle School Builders Club, touched the lives of hundreds and thousands, really, of young people in the town of Hanson. She won many awards, including as a 4-H member through the Plymouth County 4-H, including the distinction of being a state sheep shearing champion. Did not know that. That's one thing I did not know about Grett. Yep? I nailed it, I think. While in Colorado with her husband, Grett was a first-place champion in racquetball tournament, skied, and participated in tennis leagues and tournaments. She was a lifelong parishioner of St. Joseph the Worker, served as a Sodality Board member and religious education teacher. She was once selected as Massachusetts Learning Teacher by her colleagues. She was, in the past, in 2011, selected as Hanson Citizen of the Year. Quite impressive. She was elected as a trustee to the Hanson Public Library Foundation, serving as secretary. And she represented the University of Rochester as an admissions volunteer, serves as Channel Two Auction Volunteer, and also served as Secretary of the Cranberry Cove Boosters. I actually cut the second page, just in the interest of time, but I think that gives you a flavor of the many, 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 many ways that Grett Luzo contributed to our community. And we just wanted to take a moment out of our days to acknowledge this, the importance of this. I think her service certainly will not be forgotten. And Senator Brady, I know wants to add some remarks. We have a flag here, Commonwealth of Massachusetts flag, that was flown over the State House that we'd like to present to the Luzo family in recognition of Grett's many years of service. Before we do, I'd like to give Senator Brady a chance just to say a few words as well. Senator Brady?
Thank you, Representative, and it's an honor to be here. And if Representative Cutler, myself, did half the things Grett did, it would be having a place held for us up in heaven where we know she's at right now. Our hearts and prayers go out to the family and to all the community, too, because not only it's a great loss to your family, but to the community. But we're grateful that she was part of this community and all she's given back, especially being an educator, because it's people like Grett that make us lead the nation in education and also giving back to our community. So God bless you and your family, and I'm glad to be a part of this. Thank you.
The next article is Article three. And who will be presenting that? Oh, thank you. Just state your name, please.
Diane Cohen, 767 Pleasant Street. I move that the town will vote to amend Article six of the May 2019 Annual Town Meeting. The Recreation Enterprise Fund expense for fiscal year 2020 as follows. Salaries, budgeted $120,759, an adjustment of $61,000 per revised fiscal year 20 budget, $181,759,000 in retained earnings. And indirect costs, budgeted $13,000, an adjustment of $12,000. Revised fiscal year 20 budget, $25,000 in taxation for total amended amount of $73,000.
Seconded, Ms. Cohen.
The explanation is, this is a housekeeping article, to adjust the fund for the Recreation Department budget through the end of fiscal year 2020.
Any questions or comments on Article three? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article three signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article three is adopted. Article four, Ms. Diaz.
Adeline Diaz, 48 Brick Street in Hanson. I move the town to vote to amend Article seven of the May 2019 Annual Town Meeting. The Transfer Station Enterprise Fund expense for fiscal year 20 as follows. Salaries, with $60,000, the adjustment is $40,000, for a total of $100,000 from retained earnings. Expenses were $1,093, $1093,489 with an adjustment of $15,000 with $2,008 retained earnings.
Seconded, Ms. Diaz.
And this is to, just a housekeeping article, because we didn't get funded in May.
And I see Mr. Young with his hand up. Mr. Young, do you have business before the town meeting?
Yes, I do, Mr. Moderator. Thank you. Bruce A. Young, 594 Indian Head Street. I wish to amend the article as follows. I move that we amend Article four to read as follows. Salaries, adjustment, $61,473. Revised budget fiscal year 2020, $121,473. Retained earnings, $100,000. Free cash, $21,473. The reason being is this: If you were at the May 2019 town meeting, you were given a proposal by the Board of Health, which would have funded the salaries for $121,473. But we had to accept the Finance Committee recommendation of $60,000 because there wasn't any sufficient funds for the town meeting to make an amendment to that article to fund the salaries for a whole fiscal year. If you should support the article that Ms. Diaz read, what would happen is, and they've already voted on this, if her actual article goes through as written, we would be, for the first time in the history of the transfer station, closing it Monday and Tuesdays, and the transfer station would only be open Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. I want to remind everybody that we had new permits to get into the transfer station this year, $30 per vehicle. Everybody went down and bought those on the assumption that the transfer station would be open five days a week. Now it's kind of like a bait and switch. We've all bought the permits, but now we're being told, and I'm telling you now, that if you vote the article that Ms. Diaz proposed, that it's only going to be open Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays. So I would suggest that you vote yes on the amendment. If the Finance Committee has a problem with it, or the Board of Health has a problem with it, we can go back, we can do a study, an actual study, on whether we should do this. But this is just throwing numbers at a perceived problem and not a real problem. And the vast majority of the funds that are used for that transfer station come from the sale of the orange bags and the pay-as-you-throw program, and also from the new permits. And a very small amount that I just gave you, is $21,473, is actually going to come through taxation by way of free cash. And free cash, as you were told, was recertified at $1.6 million just recently by the Department of Revenue. So we have more than sufficient funds to fund it for the whole year. I suggest that you vote in a positive way on the amendment.
Mr. Sullivan?
Just a point of clarification on this. The article as written is -- Just a point of clarification on this. The article as written is what the Board of Health has determined is needed to run the transfer station for the remainder of the year. So this is what is needed to run it for the remainder of the year. This wasn't a FinCom number, Bruce. This was a proposed number, and this is what is needed to run it through the year.
Well, I'll just remind...
I'm just...
I'll just remind... Order! I'll just remind everybody to direct their comments through me, please. But go ahead. Mr. Sullivan?
That's the point I'm making. I'm not arguing ours, anything like that. This number was not proposed by me.
I understand that, Mr. Sullivan. Thank you. I just want to remind everybody that when we were here, again, when we were here last May at the town meeting, okay, there were various attempts to amend, trying to do exactly what I am doing right now, through free cash or any other source. We were told no funds were available. But we were told, wait a while, come back to October town meeting, and we will find, well, free cash would be recertified, and we'll find the money to fund it. So here we are, and we're still short funding, for the first time, the transfer station. So all I'm doing is doing what we were told that we could do at this, at last May's town meeting. I'm back here. I want to restore the funds, so that the transfer station is open like it always has been, five days a week, Monday, Tuesday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. End of story.
Mr. Paligra.
Joe Paligra, 72 Lakeside Terrace. Mr. Moderator, to the Board of Health, if they can give me an answer, at the heart of this is just understanding the, at the transfer station, what is actually going to happen here? Are we going to downsize and have days that are not going to be available for people to take their trash to the transfer station? And with that, I understand that the town does not have to have a transfer station. I know that is the law, but this is a service that is very good to the town. And I understand also that since we did get the tickets, the new stickers, that there is a growing number of people using the transfer station, I myself being one of them. And I just wanted to express to the town that, you know, again, this is a service that is a service that a lot of towns don't have anymore. And I don't want to pay a large amount of money for a trash pickup. So I just wanted to ask that question of the Board of Health, if they can give us some numbers here, or some idea of what's going on. Thank you, Ms. Diaz.
Yeah, we came up with this number because we were told that the transfer station should be self-sustaining. And the only way for us to do that was to cut the budget, and the only way to do that was to cut two days a week. And that's why this was made that way.
Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns? Mr. Edgell?
Richard Edgell, 115 South Street. These orange bags, it was done through the grant enterprise account. And someplace along the line, the Finance Committee, or the accountant, once a year, should tell us how well that account is, you know, how solvent it is, how much money it takes in. We shouldn't have to ask for it. It should be told to us. And when we were doing the orange bags originally, that was supposed to improve, not just take that money and use it as a slush fund. So I see no reason why that if you don't vote for this amendment, you're going to see the transfer station closed for two days. And that didn't say it on this article. You're not being honest to the public.
Mr. Sullivan?
So I believe the moderator went over the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund at the beginning. There is $74,000 and some change in the account. Again, we sat down with the Board of Health, Ms. Diaz, Ms. Kemet, myself, sat down, went over the financial numbers of it. The transfer station, as it operates now, is not operating, is not generating enough revenue for the expenses that it costs. Our suggestion was to cut the days down to keep this a valuable resource that the town wants to use, but at the same time to minimize it. It's losing money badly, because the number of people who jumped off when private hauling was offered, a large percentage of the population, I don't have the exact figure, but I believe it's around 40% of the town uses the transfer station, 60% doesn't. The number needs to be higher to make it a self-sustaining enterprise. So right now, the transfer station does not make, it does not make enough money to keep itself going with retained earnings. So in order to minimize that impact, discussions were made and solutions were brought up, not only this year, but in past years, with the previous, excuse me, health agent. He had actually trimmed his own budget to bring it closer to an even sum. But it's not making the money that it expends.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Virginia Hill, 54 Winslow Drive in Hanson. I have a couple of questions as far as the transfer station. How many employees run it during the course of the day?
Ms. Diaz would have to answer that.
Two. Why is it closed for lunch, then?
Well, again, you'd have to ask the Board of Health, ma'am. I have no idea.
Why is the transfer station closed for lunch? You can only have one? You can only have, you can have two.
Ms. Diaz, most people couldn't hear that exchange, so if you could please reiterate.
For safety reasons, we don't have one person working by themselves.
And I don't want this to become a micromanagement of the transfer station, ma'am, please.
Okay. And that certainly answers that one question I have. But as a working, full-time working person in the town of Hanson, originally, the hours were Monday through Friday, and, I mean, Monday through Saturday close Sunday, I don't remember what exactly were. But if you're a working person, and the hours are eight, what are they on now, 8:30 to, 8:30 to 4:45, that leaves five days I cannot access the transfer station. I was thrilled when they opened it on Sundays, because that gave me the opportunity to use it now. But again, the $30 fee, the trash bags, I've supplemented where I do have a trash pickup. But I also use the transfer station on occasion. But I would have to say, for the money that we use, that we pay for it, it's not as convenient for a working person to use as it stands right now. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Mr. Young?
I'll just make one last comment here. When the pay-as-you-throw system was set up, and I was at that meeting, and I replayed the meeting from five years ago, I heard the town administrator say, three, on three different occasions, in promotion of the pay-as-you-throw program, that the setup of the enterprise, this enterprise fund, and also the pay-as-you-program, the pay-as-you-program, was not intended to completely supplement the costs of running the transfer station by the sale of the orange plastic bags. And I heard that echoed by the person from the DEP, who had set up 42 other pay-as-you-throw. Pay-as-you-throw has a dual purpose. It raises funds for the transfer station, and the orange bags, which you pay $2 for, was used as an incentive to put trash into your trash bags and to recycle more, okay? And it's worked. People are recycling more, because it cost them $2 for a bag. It costs me, I only use one bag a week, it cost me $104, plus a $30 permit fee. So it cost me $134 a year versus the $350 it would cost me for curbside. And it gives people an opportunity to make a choice, curbside versus trash. And as far as an enterprise account that it's set up under, and you heard Mrs. Frizzetti say it, there's no way in that law of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts where it says that you cannot supplement it with taxation. In fact, every year since we've had the orange bags, we've supplemented a small portion of the cost of operating that transfer station with taxation every single year. And prior to that, we funded the transfer station totally through taxation and an override. So please vote the amendment as it stands. Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Young, I have to say, you are one of the most amazing people. You have the town meeting from five years ago, and you watched it. And the only thing I can ask, did I look younger?
I kind of think we both do.
Mr. Sullivan?
Even if you want to look at it as we have been supplementing it, that's correct. The issue has become that each year, that deficit gets larger and larger. We accepted a certain amount of tax, taxation needed to support the transfer station as a, as a community. We've been doing that. We haven't said that it has to be self-sufficient. The issue is that each year, that deficit gets bigger and bigger, instead of maintaining the level it's at. So as the expenses keep going up and up, we're paying more and more for the transfer station each year. That's what I'm saying, Bruce. That's the math, the math.
Well, let me tell you what the math is. $87,000 in this fiscal year, and all I'm asking for is $21,000 this year. You do the math.
So when it goes up next year, what are you going to ask for?
Not until I've recognized you. Thank you, Mr. Weeks.
Hi, Joe Weeks, 83 Hancock Street, Hanson. So I guess my question is, in full disclosure, I am someone that does pay for a curbside pickup. But I do look at the transfer station as a service that people are willing to pay through their taxation for that service. And I do use it every once in a while. So I guess my big question is, I just question and comment to you, Mr. Moderator, is who's determining if this is actually a financial crisis right now, if people are actually willing to pay for it through their taxes and through the various programs to offset and supplement this? And I guess my comment is, is that I think it's a much wiser way to go about doing this, that if, the larger aspect of the overall operating cost, and whether or not to even keep the transfer station, really shouldn't be done through piecemeal and partial funding amendments through town warrants. I think the conversation should happen in a much larger level, where we're actually talking about this when you're in open. So I think that, I am asking that you do support the amendment as a result.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of Mr. Young's... Oh, I'm sorry, ma'am. Please state your name.
Hi, I'm Catherine Coakley, 55 Hobby Circle. My question is, if you're considering, by what you said, Ms. Diaz, to close two days, do we understand or have any idea what the utilization of the transfer station is on the days you pointed to close?
Ms. Diaz.
Yes, we did do a traffic survey, and Monday and Tuesdays were the days, there was the least amount of traffic coming through the transfer station. The, there was the least amount of cars coming through on Mondays and Tuesdays. The traffic was higher on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
Do you have the specific numbers, Ms. Diaz?
I don't have them with me. No.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of Mr. Young's amendment to Article IV signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article IV is adopted. As, I'm sorry, no, the amendment, Article IV is amended. We will now have questions and comments on Article IV as amended. Seeing none. All those in favor of Article IV as amended signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article IV is adopted. Article V, Ms. Kemet.
I made the town vote to transfer the sum of $4,535.65 from free cash to reimburse Joseph R. and Cheryl Sargent for taxes paid on property erroneously sold to them by the town.
Seconded, Ms. Kemet.
Yep. This parcel was conveyed to the sergeants in error. In 1995, the town voted to authorize the selectmen to accept the parcel from the sergeants and appropriate $1,500 to purchase the same. However, the conveyance of the property never occurred, and the sergeants continued to pay taxes thereon. This money is to reimburse the sergeants for the money spent in purchasing the property from the town, $1,500, and to reimburse the sergeant for property taxes paid, $3,035.65.
Any questions or comments on this? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article V signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article V is adopted. Article VI, Chief Thompson.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen. I move the town vote to transfer $60,000 from ambulance receipt reserved account to purchase, install, and warranty a striker-patient loading system and power stretcher for our backup 2014 Ford ambulance.
Seconded, Chief Thompson.
These funds will be utilized to purchase, install, and warranty a striker-patient loading system and power stretcher for our backup ambulance. This ambulance is utilized as a backup when one of our primary ambulances are out of service. When we purchase a new ambulance, and within the next three years, this complete system will be transferred to that new ambulance.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article VI signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article VI is adopted. I think the youngest town resident is here tonight. How old is he? Seven weeks old. Congratulations. Yeah, he can't vote, but I'm so happy he's here. Someday. All right. Article VII, Mr. Ellis.
Good evening. Don Ellis, Chairman of the Planning Board. I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the amount of $5,000 to supplement the amounts appropriated in Article VIII of the October 2018 Special Town Meeting to create zoning map books, which will show the correct zoning districts.
Do we have a second? Seconded, Mr. Ellis.
The explanation is that land use departments are using zoning map books from 1997 that have the zoning delineated. Any zoning district changes or developments created after 1997 are not depicted on these books. This is vital information for the land use departments to have. In October 2018, a sum of $3,500 was appropriated for these layers to be added onto the people's GIS assessors' maps. This has not taken place, and the firm completing the town maps was unable to add the layers to the assessors' maps. An outside firm will be needed to be hired in order to get the zoning information correctly depicted on the town maps.
Any questions or concerns about Article VIII? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article VIII signify by saying aye. Oh, I'm sorry. I flipped the page. All those in favor of Article VII, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article VII is adopted. Article VIII, Mr. Ellis.
Thank you. I move the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $5,000 to hire an outside firm to recodefied the zoning bylaw book.
Do we have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded, Mr. Ellis.
Explanation is, the planning board is responsible for creating and overseeing the zoning bylaw books. The zoning books were recodefied, recodefied in 2014. Changes were made to the sections that were not carried throughout the entire zoning book. Therefore, the zoning books are incorrect and confusing. They need to be corrected. Correct the zoning bylaw books will be an extensive undertaking at this point. An outside firm will be needed to be consulted. Estimated is $5,000.
Any questions or concerns on Article VIII? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article VIII signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article VIII is adopted. Article IX, Mr. Ellis.
Thank you. I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $15,000 to hire an outside firm to draft a conceptual plan of the revitalization of Main Street, Hanson.
Seconded, Mr. Ellis.
The explanation is, the town planner is working on revitalizing downtown Main Street by the MBTA station, in order to apply for available grants, funds, to achieve some of the changes on Main Street. The town planner will need a conceptual design of how we would like to, Main Street to be in progress, to progress, sorry.
Any questions or concerns on Article IX? Mr. Paligra.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee voted not to recommend. Can I understand what they're saying?
Mr. Sullivan?
It was made aware to us that this is a $15,000 drawing. It is not an architectural plan, and one already exists in concept format that would suffice.
Any other comments? Mr. Ellis?
Yes, at this time, I'm not working on this project. Our town planner is working on the project, has more information, working with the selectmen on this. So I would like to ask if she could speak as to answer the question.
By all means, ma'am, if you could introduce yourself.
Good evening. Deborah Petty, the town planner. I have really identified Main Street as needing to be revitalized. We have an MBTA station. We have, it is zoned our business district, and yet it's in blight conditions down there. It really needs some progress, and we need to redo things down there. I am doing a lot of grant writing, but in order to ask for grants, you need to show them what you're, what you want to do. And this is truly just a drawing. And this is truly just a drawing, and that's what it costs, $15,000. Architectural plans for something like that would probably be $800,000, $900,000. I'm hoping to get a grant to do that kind of work, but I need this starting point to do it. I have not seen any other plans in the office of any revitalization of Main Street, so if somebody has those, I would be happy to look at them, but I really need a starting point to move anything forward down on Main Street and in our business district. So I'm asking for the $15,000 to start that.
Ms. Fitzgerald, Kement.
Yes, I just want to say that the Board of Selectmen has made revitalization of Main Street a priority. We've asked our town planner to focus on this. We've designated it as an economic target area. We're having extensive conversations with all the owners along that strip. We've got involvement of our building inspector, who is both being helpful while at the same time enforcing the building code so that we can move people along in a positive direction. And although this is a drawing, as Deb mentioned, it's critical. She's identified this as something that she needs in order to move forward, and frankly, to shop that area out to people that are going to help move that forward in a positive way. So we're looking at hopefully getting some shops there, perhaps a modest amount of, you know, of housing and the like. And the only way to do that is to get some conceptual drawings so that people can actually visualize what it will look like versus what it actually looks like right now, which is not all that appealing.
Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Nine, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay?
Nay.
The ayes have it. Article Nine is adopted.
Thank you.
Article Ten, Mr. Means.
Mike, Main Street, 42 St. Street. I move the town to vote to transfer the sum of $20,000 from free cash for the removal of street sweepings.
Seconded, Mr. Means.
Street sweepings are considered as hazardous material and must be removed and properly disposed of.
Any questions or concerns on Article Ten? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Ten signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Article Ten is adopted. Article Eleven, Mr. Means.
I move the vote -- the town vote to transfer the sum of $12,000 from free cash for the testing and removal of the catch basin cleanings.
One moment, Mr. Means. Madam Clerk, I believe you said $12,000, not $12,000. Is that going to affect the -- did you mean?
Yes, $12,000.
Thank you for the clarification, sir. Mr. Means.
Material removed from the catch basins is considered as hazardous material. It must be tested, removed, and properly disposed of.
Any questions or concerns on Article Eleven? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Eleven signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Article Eleven is adopted. Article Twelve, Ms. McDevitt.
Hi, Diana McDevitt, 63 Goan Drive, Library Trustee. I move the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $10,000 for the purpose of removing and planting trees in front of the Library Senior Center.
Seconded. Ms. McDevitt.
Two trees along the Library Senior Center walkway have already died and been removed. The remaining seven trees need to be removed and new trees planted in that area. They detract from the beauty of the building and pose a hazard as limbs have fallen in the walkway and the trunks are starting to rot.
Any questions or concerns on Article Twelve? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Twelve signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Article Twelve is adopted. Article Thirteen. Yes, sir.
William Garvey, 66 Morton Street, Water Commissioner. I move the town vote to transfer $8,000 from water -- well, from the amounts appropriated under Article Five, Line 85, expenses of the May 2009 Annual Town Meeting, to be added to the amount appropriated under Article Five, Line 84. Salaries for the purpose of funding and implementing the cost item of a collective bargaining agreement between the Hanson Water Department, Board of Water Commissioners, and the AFS-CME Local 1700 Water Union for the period beginning July 1st, 2019, and ending June 30th, 2020.
Seconded. One moment, Mr. Garvey. Was there a defect in the reading?
Did I say 2000?
Does he have to reread it, or can we correct it?
May 2019.
All right. So it's the expenses of the May 2019 Annual Town Meeting. But, Mr. Garvey, it has been seconded.
This is to fund the salary line for the settlement of the Water Department's fiscal year 2020 union contract, which represents a 2% increase.
Any questions or concerns with Article Thirteen? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Thirteen signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Article Thirteen is adopted. Article Fourteen, Mr. Garvey.
I move the town vote to transfer from water surplus $40,000 to purchase an electronic sign and signage for the Water Department Building.
Seconded. Mr. Garvey.
This money will be used for an electronic sign that will be helpful to inform water customers other than the town's website on matters regarding water issues throughout the year. Also, the sign can be available to other departments when needed. Plus, we would like to -- like some type of signage on the Water Department Building.
Any questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Fourteen signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Article Fourteen is adopted. Article Fifteen, Mr. Garvey.
I move the town vote to transfer from water surplus $25,000 for a security system to be placed at the town's Crystal Springs well site and at the Water Department's office located at 1073 West Washington Street.
Seconded. Mr. Garvey.
The board feels it is imperative that the department have some type of security system in place at both the well field facility and the Water Department Office.
Any questions or concerns on Article Fifteen? Mr. Edgell.
Water safety and security over in Halifax, everything's fenced in. You can't even get in that place. So if this is required for the town of Hanson, so be it.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Fifteen signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Article Fifteen is adopted. Article Sixteen, Mr. Clemmons.
I move that the town vote to appropriate $98,000 from the Open Space Reserve Fund to be used for the purchase of Zero Maquon Street Assessors Map 60 Lot 2, known as the Sleeper Property, to be held in care and custody of the Conservation Commission.
Seconded. Mr. Clemmons.
There's a long explanation in there, but it boils down to this. This is an outstanding piece of property which the Sleeper family has been protecting privately for decades, and now they need to convey it and have offered it to the town for a fair price that was determined by an independent appraiser. So by doing this, we already have received approval of a $203,000 state grant for this purpose, so the town will be responsible for about the remaining one-third. And it's valuable because it would connect Camp Kawani, Smitty's Boggs, and protected land in Pembroke. It would protect aquifers that serve a number of communities, including Hanson. And it's basically the last piece in a puzzle that would protect a very valuable piece of landscape that will protect watersheds, water supplies, wildlife, and passive recreation.
I have a question. Is there a plan to connect the Bay Circuit Trail through the property?
The trail goes about three feet from the southern edge of the property, so it is already there and marked, but the trail would be significantly impacted if it was developed. We're trying to prevent those negative impacts from happening.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Sixteen signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Article Sixteen is adopted. Article Seventeen, Mr. Mitchell.
I move the town transfer from free cash the sum of $15,000 to be added to the amounts appropriated in Article Ten, Line 1 of the May 2019 Town Meeting for the townwide fiber improvements.
Seconded. Mr. Mitchell.
Funds will be used to loop Camp Kawani into the townwide fiber installation project.
Any questions or concerns on Article Seventeen? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Seventeen signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Article Seventeen is adopted. Article Eighteen. Oh, Ms. Fitzgerald, Kement.
I move the town vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from free cash a sum of money to remove -- well, okay, Beth, I obviously don't have this. Thanks, sorry about that. I move the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $25,000 to remove dangerous and hazardous trees throughout the Camp Kawani property.
Seconded. And you meant to say $25,000?
Yes, $25,000.
Yes. Seconded, Ms. Fitzgerald, Kement.
Yep. There are several dangerous and hazardous trees in the area of the lodge and north and south campgrounds which need to be removed under the direction of the tree warden.
Any questions or concerns? Yes, sir.
Steve Smith. Does that include the one on the beach with the exposed roots that they had?
I don't.
Ms. Fitzgerald.
I don't, I mean, I'm not the tree warden, clearly, but I did walk the property, and the majority of them are along the road on the way in there. Matt, do you know if it includes the tree down by the beach?
I believe so, yes.
If it's marked with -- I don't want to mislead you and say that it does, you know, but he's marked all of the trees with spray paint.
Oh.
And unfortunately, he's not able to be here with us tonight. Mike, are you -- where are you, Mr. Means?
Mr. Means? Oh, could I just clarify, sir? Do you want to see the tree removed or kept?
Removed. Exposed roots. Grab some spray paint. I know it's been talked about, but I honestly don't have a solid answer for you.
All right.
Worth a shot.
All right.
Marian Damasio, 552 Indian Head Street. So do these include the trees that are along the road, or is that something we voted for at the last town meeting? Because they're...
Ms. Fitzgerald, Kement.
It does include some that are along the road, yes. And they've all been identified by our new interim town surveyor. We had him go out and take a look in the last couple of weeks because Matt and I were concerned that we might be marking trees that were otherwise healthy, and we really didn't want to just clear cut all along there.
Yes.
But he did confirm that he felt quite confident with the ones that Mr. Hanlon had marked, and that he thought that they were all candidates to be taken down.
Okay, that's my concern. It seems like there are too many coming down.
Yeah.
Any other questions or concerns? Mr. Clemmons.
Phil Clemmons, 46 Main Street, Chair of Conservation. Conservation has had a number of informal but very mutually beneficial conversations with the Hyde Department, Tree Department, and Recreation Department, including these trees. A number of these trees are Norway maples, which are not native. They're exotic invasive trees, which weren't that available to begin with that they planted because they grew very well. My understanding is that going forward, any replacement trees planted in better locations would be of a more desirable species, and we do agree that there are hazards there, but Conservation is not unmindful of the sorts of concerns people may have, but we think it's actually a pretty sound plan.
I have to ask, what's a more desirable species of tree?
Native maples, like sugar maple, red maple, and we can go on and on, but there's a lot of good other choices.
Very good. Ms. Santa Lucia.
Hi, Teresa Santa Lucia, 517 West Washington Street. At the last town meeting, I believe there was a warrant for $50,000, and $25,000 was approved to do trees along the road. I just want to clarify that this $25,000 is for trees up by the lodge that is impacting the safety of the lodge structure. So I just want to make sure that this money is actually going to be used for trees up by the lodge and by the buildings, rather than the road. That seems to be how the warrant is written.
Mr. Mitchell.
The total amount of the trees was 50,000. We got 25 the last town meeting, 25 here. It's for the trees along the road and in front of the lodge. So a portion of these funds could be used on a few of the trees on the road. It's not just the lodge. It's a total.
They will be used for the trees that the committee has determined are dangerous towards the lodge and the buildings.
That's correct.
Yes. I love a good tree debate. Any other questions or concerns? All those in favor of Article Eighteen, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Article Eighteen is adopted. Article Nineteen, Mr. Dyer.
I move that the town vote, subject to an award of mass tree grant, to transfer of $10,000 from free cash as the town's 50/50 share of a mass tree grant to replace the trees throughout the town.
Seconded. Mr. Dyer.
These funds are subject to receiving mass tree grant. If received, the funds will be used to replace the trees at Camp Kawani, the schools, and other areas throughout the town.
Any questions or concerns on Article Nineteen? Mr. Armstrong.
Through you to Mr. Dyer. Previously, we just had an article to replace trees at the library. Can we use some of the 50/50 towards that as well?
Correct.
Mr. Dyer.
So, thank you, Mr. Moderator, through you. Correct. The reason why the wording of the previous article about replacing the trees at the library is, just in case we do not receive this grant, we'll be able to still have funds available to plant those trees.
Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Nineteen signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Article Nineteen is adopted. Article Twenty, Mr. Blouse.
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $50,000 to be added to the stabilization fund.
Seconded. Mr. Blouse.
This money will be used to increase the stabilization fund. A stabilization fund is a mechanism for setting aside money either for unforeseen needs or for capital projects. Such a fund is intended to equalize the effect of capital expenditures over time and to provide a rainy day fund. The dollar amount appropriated under this article will increase the stabilization fund to $1,255,832, which represents approximately 5% of the operating budget. The town's target has been to maintain close to 5%, which is the industry standard minimum amount for stabilization funds as recommended by our auditors, and will help to maintain a positive bond rating for future borrowing purposes.
Any questions or concerns on Article Twenty? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Twenty signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Article Twenty is adopted. Article Twenty-One, Mr. Hickey.
I move the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $25,000 to be added to the regional schools capitalization fund. Stabilization fund. Sorry, Beth.
Do we have a second? Seconded. Mr. Hickey.
This stabilization fund sets aside funds for the exclusive use of paying for capital improvement to the Hanson School Buildings and to the Whitman-Hanson Regional High School.
Thank you, Mr. Hickey. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Twenty-One signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Article Twenty-One is adopted. Article Twenty-Two, Ms. Fitzgerald, Kement.
I move the town of Hanson rescind its vote on Article Eighteen of the October 1st, 2018 Special Town Meeting, approving the amended regional agreement with the Whitman-Hanson Regional School.
Seconded. Ms. Fitzgerald, Kement.
The town desires to ensure that the agreement provides sufficient flexibility in the apportionment of school funding between Whitman and Hanson so that the town will have the opportunity to reduce its costs to the extent permitted by law.
So we have a motion and a second on Article Twenty-Two. So, we have a motion and a second on Article 22. I just want to say right at the outset, I don't want to get into a detailed debate over the assessments between Whitman and Hanson. This article is simply saying which agreement we're going to be following going forward, whether it's the old agreement or whether it's the new agreement. So if anyone would like to comment on this article? Yes, sir.
Robert Lundell, 93 High Street. Just as a point of clarity, we're voting this...if we vote yes on this, we will go by the old system where it would be a cost per student basis.
Ms. Fitzgerald, come in.
If we vote on this, we will be reverting back to the 1991, signed in 1992, regional agreement, which outlines that the assessment is per pupil.
And you voted 5-0 for it? Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 22 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 22 is adopted. Article 23, Mr. Norton.
John Norton, 31 Indian Path. I'd like to see if the town will vote to adopt the revised capital improvement.
Mr. Norton, if you could say, "I move that the town..."
I'm sorry. I move the town vote to adopt the revised capital improvement program as presented by the Capital Improvement Committee or take any other action.
Second.
Mr. Norton.
Basically, we've just added some projects. We added the demolition of the school if that becomes necessary, a second water tower, and corrected for the fiber optic move at Camp Kawani. It's simply accepting the new numbers.
So that is the pink handout that was at the door for the capital improvement matrix. Any questions or concerns? Yes, Mr. Pelliger.
Mr. Moderator, Joe Pelliger, 72 Lakeside Tower. Once again, I have a lot of faith in the Finance Committee. Why did you vote not to recommend this, please?
Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you. We voted not to recommend because our recommendations were due to the town administrator last Tuesday, at which time we had not seen this document.
Any other questions or concerns? Are you rising to make a comment, ma'am? Okay, thank you. Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 23 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 23 is adopted. Article 24, Mr. Mitchell.
I move that the town vote to change the term of the town moderator from one year to three years effective the next annual town election on May 16, 2020.
Second.
Seconded, Mr. Mitchell.
Extending the term allows for continuity in the position and alleviates the necessary of necessity of gathering signatures on an annual basis.
Mr. Edgell.
Rich Edgell, 115 South Street. Doesn't take that long to get signatures. We're not always going to have Sharon Keely here, so I think we ought to keep it the way it is. I'll help you with your signatures if you need it, but I think we're safe by doing one year.
I appreciate your faith, sir. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 24 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it. Article 24 is adopted. Article 25, Mr. Dyer.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to convey a non-exclusive easement for a 30-foot strip of land running along the property line between 62 Ocean Ave and further authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into and execute any and all documents necessary to issue the conveyance of the property for the purpose of access to the septic system of 51 Ocean Avenue, as more specifically described in the easement and on the plan entitled Subsurface Sewage Disposal System As Built, Number 51 Ocean Avenue in Hanson, Massachusetts, prepared by Outback Engineering Incorporated, 165 Grove Street, Middleborough, Massachusetts, 02346, on file in the town clerk's office.
Second.
Seconded, Mr. Dyer.
The property at 62 Ocean Ave has been taken by the town of Hanson as a tax possession. Prior to the taking, the former owner constructed a septic system for the property he owned across the street at 51 Ocean Ave. The then-owner never issued an easement. The property at 51 Ocean Ave has been sold. This easement provides the property owner of 51 Ocean Ave access to the septic system.
I'd just point out that this vote requires a two-thirds majority. Mr. Edgell.
The owner of that property is the town of Hanson, correct?
Mr. Dyer.
I believe so, yes.
It is, yes.
You're allowing a septic system on town property? Why aren't you asking the owner to purchase sort of a short amount of money? He's not going to pay taxes. He's going to have a septic system on town property for the rest of his life at no cost. I mean, who else can put a septic system in on town property? This is not right.
So...
Mr. Dyer.
So I believe we took the property after the septic system was built.
Correct.
So what we're doing right now is the wording in here, you're allowing us as the Board of Selectmen to be able to negotiate with the next owner about purchasing...allowing them to purchase an easement from us, the town of Hanson, for that purpose. We're not just giving anything away right now.
You will not...it's a small piece of property. You will not be able to put anything else on that property. That septic system takes a good portion of that land. It's null and void. You know, Article 5, you straighten out some property. I think you ought to straighten out this property here. And I don't know who else would be able to put a septic system in on town property. It's not right. This isn't a water line. This is 30 feet.
Ms. Fitzgerald, come in.
Well, the septic has already been put in, sir. We're not granting them permission to do that. It's already been put in.
It's...
Mr. Edgell.
This whole thing's been boggled. It's you have a septic system on town-owned property because when they sold the property across the street, that septic system was already there. No one did their homework on this property. So I feel that you're making a big mistake by letting someone use town-owned property, and you'll never be able to sell this property with that septic...that sass in there. I'm sorry.
I think you have...we have a comment behind you, sir.
In full support of this gentleman ahead of me, Molly Goodell, 48 Squonam Avenue, as a homeowner in the Mont Ponce neighborhood, you know, there are too many abandoned properties. And my question is just if due diligence has been done to whether or not this easement would make the property of 62 Ocean Avenue less desirable to somebody who might potentially like to purchase it from the town? Because my hope for the Mont Ponce neighborhood is that we will see these abandoned properties sold off to people who want to develop them and live in this neighborhood and raise their families here.
Any comment? Could we have the...one moment, Mr. Clemens. Could we hear from the town council?
So just to be clear, if 62 Ocean Ave were sold in the future, it would be subject to the easement. So for whatever value that easement holds, the sale of that property later on would be subject to. So it would be reflected in the fair market value. The fact of the matter is, the septic system currently exists on the property, and the other adjoining property was sold through tax title unbeknownst to the town that the septic system was there without an easement in place. The prior property owner was supposed to, when granted by the Board of Health, the opportunity to cite the septic system was supposed to record the easement, and that was never done.
Mr. Clemens.
I think 62 Ocean Avenue is a location where there once was a house, but the house has been removed. Yes. As a member of the Conservation Commission, I was at that site a number of times for a number of reasons, and the property at 62 Ocean Avenue is extremely close to extensive wetlands behind it. And anything within 100 feet of wetlands is subject to...if it's a new construction or considered new construction, will be subject to conservation review. This might be...I don't think this is speculation. I think the property value of 62 Ocean Avenue would be extremely limited due to the State Wetlands Protection Act, and so we should keep that in mind. Right now, it's vacant. It would be perhaps a challenge for anyone to conceive how to develop it.
Mr. Edgell.
The idea of just handing this 30 feet to someone without paying...he isn't even going to be paying taxes on this. So it's...I really feel that you shouldn't vote this article. Make some arrangements with this owner on the septic system, but not just say, "Yeah, you can have an easement." Because once that easement goes in, he doesn't pay taxes, and he's using town property.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Constantine.
Good evening. My name is Tom Constantine. I live in Brook Street. Did it ever go through anybody's mind maybe to just gift this particular piece of land to the owner? Because at some point in time, if somebody tries to develop that piece of property where the septic system is located, that would destroy the viability of the home that's on the water. So if one or the other happens, if somebody loses, if you just gift that septic system to the individual and the land that's contained therein, and just turn the rest of it into trees and flowers and trees or whatever, everybody kind of wins. We're not talking about, you know, millions of dollars there.
I'm surprised that you of all people want the town to give something away for nothing, but...
I'd like, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, I'd like to make a motion to pass over this. Mr. Constantine, great point, but I think as you'll see in one of the other articles, actually, the next article coming up, we want to try to get out of the habit of the town granting anything to anybody for free. And we want to make sure that if it's town-owned property, that we're getting some type of use, you know, monetary value for use of town property. And you've brought up some compelling arguments, and I think we'd like to take it under advisement, so I'm making a motion to pass over this article.
Do we have a second? Seconded. Mr. Ellis, do you want to comment on that?
Just a quick question. How many square feet are we talking about on that lot?
Do we have an answer? We don't know the exact square footage.
Acre, half acre, 5,000?
I don't think we have that.
No educated guess?
It's Ocean Ave. It can't be more than 5,000 square feet.
All right. We have a motion to pass over. It's been seconded. All those in favor of passing over Article 25, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 25 is passed over. Article 20... Article 26, Mr. Blouse.
I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to convey a non-exclusive use easement to Federal National Mortgage Association for a 10-foot strip of land running along the property line between Plot 30 and Plot 32 Woodbine Avenue for the existing home encroaching on Plot 32, as more specifically described in the easement and on the plan entitled Plot Plan of Land in Hanson, Mass. Prepared for...by Barbara Watts...prepared for Barbara Watts by John W. Delano and Associates, Incorporated, 220 Hudson Street, Halifax, Mass., job number JN-6093, on file in the town clerk's office, and further authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into and execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate the conveyance of the property on such terms deemed advisable.
Second.
Seconded, Mr. Blouse.
Several years ago, an addition was added to the home at 410 Woodbine Avenue, which was later determined to be encroaching on town-owned property. This easement will be granted, subject to negotiations with the Federal Mortgage Association.
Mr. Edgell. You don't have to apologize.
On that property, of course, I live down there, so I know they...when they built it, they didn't survey it, and so that's what happened. But, question. Taxes. Is there a tax lien on the property right now? I know there should be a water lien on that property. Are the taxes paid on that property?
We would not have that information here. I don't know if our assessor, you know, our town treasurer would have that information. This board doesn't have it right now.
There's a $30,000 assessment on each home down there at 5%. Hanson's really costs a lot. And the point is, my question is, is that that's still outstanding? The bank hasn't paid that. So in order to grant anybody an easement or grant a permit or anything else, some of these things should be paid.
Yes, Mr. Edgell, the property will not be allowed to be conveyed unless all of that has been settled. This particular article relates to the fact that they've already encroached on town land, and we're insisting... in fact, we basically...we had somebody approach us last year...well, our prior town administrator approached us and suggested that we would grant an easement to these folks, and the board dug in and said, "No, we will not grant an easement. We will wait until the bank comes and asks us what to do in order to be able to convey this property." So they have now come, and they are saying they want to sell the property, and this article is for us to get money, for us to actually get the value of the land that they've encroached upon. So that's what this is for, but separately agreed. And of course, that's the way that our tax folks will work in Town Hall. Well, they will...there will be a lien...there is a lien...if in fact, they owe taxes and they owe water, there will be a lien on this property, and they will not be allowed to convey the deed until that has been satisfied.
I just wanted a matter of record, because, you know, you have a bylaw in town. You're not permits and anything else. You're not supposed to convey until all those things are...the taxes are paid, and I just want a matter of record, that's all.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Any other questions or concerns? Any other questions or concerns? This requires a two-thirds vote. So all those in favor of Article 26 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. By the required two-thirds vote, Article 26 is adopted. Article 27, Mr. Hickey.
I move the town vote to amend the wage and personnel bylaws, Article 2-12, classification and compensation, Section 1C as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Seconded. Mr. Hickey.
These are housekeeping changes to clarify the union and employment contracts of various positions.
Any questions or concerns on Article 27? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 27 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 27 is adopted. Article 28, Ms. Fitzgerald Kemet.
I move the town to amend the wage and personnel bylaws, Article 2-12, classification and compensation, by deleting Section 11A in its entirety and inserting the new sections 11A as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Seconded. Ms. Fitzgerald Kemet.
Amendments include the removal of the former Item C, Treasurer Collector, and former Item F, Assessor, and Section 1, as the positions have separate employment contracts. Further amendments include increasing the top range in Section 1, Item A, Director of Elder Affairs, and Item G, Town Planner, reducing the minimum for Item I, Informational Technology Director, to 50,000, and relettering all the lines.
Any questions or concerns on Article 28? Mr. Edgell.
All right. This is about the only opportunity I can get to talk about this, and under E, health agent. We haven't had a health agent in a whole year. And I think it's about time we hired a health agent, because the town is going to be on the hook if something bad happens. You have...
We have a point of order. Ms. Kempmet.
I don't think that this article has anything to do with who we're hiring and not hiring, or whether we're filling the requisitions. I think it's certainly our intention to fill every opening that we have, but this is really about the reclassification and compensation.
Well, reclassify that as a point of information, but well taken, thank you.
Just a point of information, because half of you haven't attended the courses I have. All right. 76 million illnesses each year, food poisoning, 325,000 hospitalization, 5,200 deaths. Oh, this isn't going to happen in Hanson, it'll happen every place else. So it's very important that we have food protection and a health agent, and this is about the only time I could bring it up, because it's listed here. We better get a health agent. A year's been long enough.
So noted. Thank you, Mr. Edgell. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 28, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 28 is adopted. You don't have to bring him out, he's the most well-behaved child I've ever seen.
Yeah.
My good... Oh, don't worry. He makes so much less noise than Mr. Young. You really are. Article 29, Mr. Mitchell.
I move that the town vote to amend wage and personnel bylaws, Article 2-12, classification and compensation, by adding a new section 12DA7 as follows, as printed in the warrant.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded. Mr. Mitchell.
The Board of Selectmen or the town administrator shall be permitted to authorize granting a newly hired employee up to 15 days of vacation leave based on prior experience in a similar position. Employees granted additional vacation leave based on prior experience shall not have their vacation leave increased until they've had five years of continuous service for the town of Hanson, at which time they may be granted additional days of vacation leave.
Any questions or comments on Article 29? Mr. Young.
I had to get up because you challenged me.
I didn't challenge anyone, Mr. Young. We always like hearing you.
The only thing I have to ask, presently, under the current bylaw, you really have to wait six months in order to get your week's vacation? And what I'm asking is, does this bylaw change that at all? Would the person still have to wait six months before they get their three weeks?
No, they wouldn't, versus...
In other words, they get it right away? Is that what you're saying?
Right, based on experience.
Mr. Young.
All right, that's the only thing I wanted to ask. So this is actually moving up the current bylaw period by five years? That's what I understand, because currently, you need five years to get three weeks, so...
It's based on experience. So let's say that employee came from another town, and they were at a job for 20 years, and they came here and got the same exact position.
Right.
Town administrator or the Board of Selectmen would have the leeway to adjust their vacation time versus someone that just was a newly hired that just got...
I understand that, but what I'm saying is, you're actually, this amendment versus the way it is now, would move up a person who is hired simply, and you're going to give them three weeks based on experience, otherwise, they would have to wait five years to get the three weeks, correct?
If the board and the town administrator deem it in the best interest of hiring this particular person in the negotiation phase, this is very facts and circumstance-specific, it is not across the board.
Correct. No, I understand, I understand, it would be, you judge the person as they would come in. That's the only point I wanted to make.
Yep.
The point about you don't have to wait six months, and it would move it up by five, it would move it up by five years.
If you're extremely experienced, and we really want you.
Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 29 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 29 is adopted. Article 30, Ms. Fitzgerald Kemet.
I move that the town vote to amend the town of Hanson general bylaws to add a new Section 24 marijuana to Article 3, articles relating to the general public, which would prohibit public consumption of marijuana in the town of Hanson, and require the licensure of all marijuana establishments as defined by Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 94G as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Seconded. Ms. Fitzgerald Kemet.
The Board of Selectmen approves the rules and regulations relative to licensure of marijuana establishments in the town of Hanson. This bylaw provides enforcement for the accepted rules and regulations.
Any questions or concerns on Article 30? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 30 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 30 is adopted. Article 31, Mr. Dyer.
I move at the town to amend the town of Hanson general bylaws by adding Article 3-25 Waste Reduction as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Seconded. Mr. Dyer.
This is to reduce the number of single-use bags in our waste stream and in our environment. And if you wouldn't mind, I just have a further explanation of what the bylaw would do.
Please.
So with this bylaw, it is not banning plastic bags all out throughout town, it's just banning the plastic bags at the point of checkout. This does not remove the option of getting a bag at the point of checkout, being the cash registers, and it's not going to add a tax or anything like that per bag. This is just simply saying, instead of getting a plastic bag at the point of checkout, you will get a paper bag at the point of checkout. And the reason why I'm proposing this is just not because of the environmental crisis at hand, but also because of our solid waste safety, solid waste workers, and improving their safety at the plant. So right at the moment, our plastic bags are going to sorting centers throughout the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and all throughout the nation, and these bags will tangle up the gears, shutting down these machines every half hour. And what happens is, workers have to crawl into these confined spaces, armed with a pocket knife, and pull out each individual plastic bag that we consume and that we dispose of. So this is to help keep the cost of recycling down, keep America manufacturing competitive, because otherwise, it just all gets shipped out to China and other nations across the world. And if we want to be competitive, we have to keep our prices down. Thank you.
Any questions or concerns? Yes, sir, if you could come to the microphone, please.
How does John Zucco, 101 Glenwood Place, Hanson, Mass., how does this affect, because you know I'm really conscious about bacteria. When you're in the meat department, there are plastic bags you can use, there are plastic bags also in the produce department. Are those affected by this amendment?
Mr. Dyer.
Mr. Moderator, through you. That's a great question, and as I said, it was at the point of checkout, so your plastic bags will still be available at the produce departments, your meat department, the dry cleaners, plastic bags for whatever else, like your trash bags. This is just at the point of checkout.
Any other questions or concerns? Ms. Damasio.
Mary Ann Damasio, 552 Indian Head Street, and I'd like to speak in favor of this amendment, and also would like the opportunity to introduce some high school students who are interested in speaking to this, if we may.
I'm always happy to hear from our students.
Okay, we have, in the audience, some of them did have to leave to study, but we had here tonight Alyssa Small, Sarah Regan, Nicolette Heath, Riley Getchel, Carly Balf, Gemma Lacy, and their Student Environmental Action Awareness Club Advisor, Mr. Kozak. So I'd just like to call them up for a minute to say a few words. Not all of them are speaking, but a few of them are.
Well, please, thank you. Come up. One moment, sir, we'll just hear from them, and we'll recognize you.
Hi, everyone. My name's Sarah, and I shop at Stop &amp; Shop, and that's in Whitman, so I'm actually not going to be affected by this, but it's still very important to me. And they use plastic bags there, and I always think of how none of those plastic bags are ever going to decompose in my lifetime, my children's lifetime, or even possibly my grandchildren's lifetime, because they take thousands of years. And plastic actually hasn't even been around for more than a century, and so every single plastic bag that's been made hasn't left this planet, and it hasn't decomposed. And there's already billions of tons of plastic on the earth, and if we keep making more and more unnecessary plastic, there won't be any way to return. And so we have a chance right now to actually return, like, change this, and I think we should use this time correctly, and this is a good place to start. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Riley. I'm actually from Whitman, too. And when asked about making the town environmentally sustainable, many people just dismiss it as a problem for the near future and now. It's really not. When your kid's town is filled with waste and plastic litters the streets, it's a long-term problem. If we don't make efforts now, we will feel the effects of our actions later. We need to get our plastic problem under control. 500 billion single-use plastic bags are used every year. On average, one person uses one bag each day. That means about and exceeding 10,000 plastic bags are used every day in Hanson. Think about where those plastic bags go. Sure, most probably go into cabinets, but what about the ones that go into the street and into our rivers and streams? We need your help so things like this don't happen. We need your help so our kids can have a safe, clean town to grow up in.
Hi, I'm Jenna, and I live in Hanson. I live on Lakeside Road, and in case you were wondering, yes, there really is a lake. I used to walk through the woods that surround it when the weather was nice, and as I've gotten older, I go less and less. It's not because I don't appreciate the plant life and fresh air, but it's because other people didn't. Now, when I walk through these woods or along that lake, all I see are plastic bags, styrofoam cups, and other pieces of trash that don't belong in my town's forests. What of the squirrels and birds that nest there and raise their young? What of the fish? What of the turtle that finds her way into my yard every year during her search for a safe place for her young to walk their first steps? I don't want to walk outside in a world where all of that is gone. That's why this matters to me. Why does it matter to you?
Hi, I'm Carly, and I want to study marine biology when I get older. Plastics are so harmful towards marine environments, and many animals do mistake plastics for food. It's so much easier if we switch to paper bags at checkout, because they can decompose instead of plastics, which, if we don't reverse the plastic use, many marine habitats will be decimated, and it's a simple switch that we could just make.
Hi, I'm Nicolette. I live in Whitman, and I was driving on the highway with my dad earlier today, and I saw about five plastic bags in the span of about 15 minutes tumbling across the road. And I thought to myself, where would this go, where would these bags go in the future? And they wouldn't just disappear like any paper, they would stick around for thousands and thousands of years. And I thought, well, what about all the animals that are alive today, that might not be alive tomorrow, next years, next decades? And all my kids, grandkids and everything, won't be able to experience the beauty of the world that we have today. So in the near future, the world won't be the same beautiful, green place it is if we keep using plastic bags, because all these beautiful species, and just the air itself will be not, it'll... The air will be polluted, the oceans will be polluted, the environment will be polluted if we don't act now.
Hi, I'm Alyssa, and I'm from Hanson. Last spring, my sister and I went to the beach for the first time of the season. When we finally got there, I was extremely disappointed because of all the trash I saw. So we decided to take our beach bag and fill it with litter, and throw away all of the trash in the garbage cans. But no matter how much we properly dispose of our wastes, plastics will never go away, only break down into microplastics, which we eat and breathe every day. Picking up trash on the beach was the most I could do, but you, as voters, can vote to help the environment even more.
Well, thank you very much. You know, it's wonderful to hear from people who aren't yet eligible to vote, but you're always welcome at town meeting, and I hope that when you turn 18 and you are registered to vote, that you'll participate in your town meetings as well. So welcome, and thank you for coming. Yes, sir.
My name is George Craig. I live on 223 East Washington Street, and in the interest of full disclosure, I worked for eight years at the Shaw's here in Hanson, October of 2013. Since October of 2014, I've been working at the Shaw's in Hanover. And during the eight years I was working at a local Shaw's here, I would also walk, you know, once every couple weeks, to the town library to look stuff up on the computer, play games, check my email, what have you. I would normally take a notebook and a pen with me, just in case I wanted to write something down, and I found that having a plastic bag to keep my notebook and pen with, you know, with me helped to walk to one from the town library. Plus, another thing I would do is, if I found a container with nickel deposits on it, that somebody had left on the side of the road, I would pick it up and put it in another plastic bag I might have with me. So I'd take cash and, you know, and then use the coin machine there at Shaw's to get these things for, you know, for rabbits. So I, in my own case, I find that, you know, having a plastic bag is nice and convenient, and that just means so.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Ellis? And then Ms. Diaz. Ms. Diaz, did you want to speak? Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Mr. Ellis.
Don Ellis, 742 High Street, Hanson. Got a question on Section 4, no, Section 5, B. Everybody there? For the first violation, the enforcing authority, upon determination that a violation has occurred, shall issue a written warning notice to the establishment specifying the violation. Then it goes down to the following penalties shall apply. A fine of $50 shall apply for the first violation, following the issuance of a written warning notice. Should not, should the first violation be just a warning, and maybe a learning curve for the establishment? And then any violation after that would have the fine? Wouldn't that be more appropriate?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. I'll leave that up to the Board of Health, who would be the enforcement officer.
Ms. Diaz.
Alain Diaz, Board of Health. That is exactly what it says, that the first would be a warning, and after the warning has been issued, the first violation, which would be the second violation, would be the, they could fine $50.
Very good. Mr. Ellis? That's not written that way?
Yeah, you know, I have to say, it's kind of a matter of interpretation, isn't it? But, yeah, what we do in the zoning bylaw committees, we try to make them as simple as possible, so they're not open to interpretation. So the board that approves it now might change, and another board might come in and do it differently. That's all, just trying to make it nice and clear that the first offense is a written warning. Second offense...
A fine of $50 shall apply for the first violation...
It does?
I think it does.
Okay.
So you're following that?
Yeah.
$50 comes after the first violation...
Because it says, upon determination, the violation shall issue a written warning, and then afterwards, after that written warning, a fine of $50 shall apply following the issuance of the written warning.
That's what this is here. A fine of $100.
So after consulting with town council, she thought that the "as written" was fairly clear. No, I've mischaracterized it. She said it was clear. It's not fairly clear, it's clear. So going on her advice, I accept that. Thank you, Mr. Ellis. Any other questions or concerns on Article 31? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 31 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
No.
The ayes have it. Article 31 is adopted. And how did Hanover Shaw's get you, and why don't you come back home? I've missed you. All right. Article 32, Mr. Dyer.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move at the town vote to amend the town of Hanson general bylaw by adding Article 3-26, polystyrene restrictions as written in the warrant.
Second.
Seconded. Mr. Dyer.
The purpose of this bylaw is to reduce the use of polystyrene in the town of Hanson, and just like the other one, I just want to kind of go further and explain what this would mean for the town of Hanson.
Please do.
This does not include plastic straws, plastic cutlery, or anything that is not listed in the bylaw. This is just for styrofoam containers, being cups, plates, the hatch shells, or anything along that line, that is in a food service, a prepared food service industry. I know a lot of people care about the Dunkin' Donuts styrofoam cups. If you have not heard, Dunkin' Donuts is moving away from the styrofoam cups by the end of 2020 throughout the nation. So regardless of this passing or not, those styrofoam cups are going to disappear. Styrofoam or polystyrene does not biodegrade, so as we move into the future, and we don't create any more landfills or have any more space to put our trash, this polystyrene does not break down. So as I'm speaking for our future and trying to prevent a waste crisis in the future, I hope that you support tonight's bylaw.
Any questions or concerns on Article 32? Seeing none. Oh, yes, sir, please come to the microphone.
Gilbert Allen, Elm Street, Hanson. My only concern is about how this will affect the food service for the elderly, the daily meals on wheels, folks that go to restaurants and can't eat the whole meal, take some home. I know it's cutting hairs, but there is a large amount of people who would speak against several of these items that are considered... several of these items that are considered polystyrene that perhaps we can address. How, what are we going to replace them with? We know Dunkin' Donuts is all set, but what about all the restaurants in the town? Thank you.
Mr. Dyer?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. And that's a great question. As I did my research and I called other towns, the only feedback that I got in that sense of things to be concerned about was for the elderly. And that was not necessarily what are we going to replace it with, but actually the thermal energy. Because with people with diabetes, they don't necessarily feel everything in their hand. And the work around all of this would be paper. We've always used paper in the past. Polystyrene is just a recently new thing, starting in the early 90s. We've all used paper containers in the past. And there's a lot of great biodegradable other options that are just as cost efficient as polystyrene. And to address, yeah, that's about it.
Any other questions or concerns? All those in favor of Article 32 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Article 32 is adopted. Do we have someone to move Article 33? If you could just state your name, please.
Good evening. Annette Benannato, 72 Brookside Drive. Wow, really close to the microphone here. I'm asking everyone to please vote yes tonight on Articles 33 and 34. This would limit the number of other types of marijuana businesses such as cultivation, manufacturing, and testing to one in the Town of Hanson. As a reminder, Hanson voters voted to prohibit marijuana retailers, but there is currently no limit on the number of other types of marijuana businesses in town. Indoor marijuana cultivation is not an environmentally friendly business model. In fact, the electric consumption alone is huge for these indoor growing facilities because they require millions of dollars in lighting just to grow the marijuana, plus the elaborate HVAC and air filtration systems to control the temperature, humidity, and odors. What kind of impact will this have, this electric consumption have on Hanson's infrastructure? Are we going to have to deal with future brownouts during summer months when electricity is in high demand? Growing marijuana is also a huge water consumer. For the 10,000 square foot facility being proposed by Impressed LLC, the estimated water consumption per week is over 11,000 gallons. And yes, the host agreement requires that they truck their own water in rather than using Hanson's water system. But regardless, this still creates a lot of liquid waste, of which a portion will get discharged into the ground. And they, this business is located in our aquifer protected district, which is very close to the Hanson's Crystal Spring Aquifer, which is our drinking water. The potential impact on our drinking water from these types of businesses is a valid concern. Another concern is that marijuana plants release potent terpenes, also known as volatile organic compounds or VOCs, which can produce harmful air pollutants. Extracting oils from marijuana, also known as marijuana manufacturing, is a dangerous process when using highly flammable chemical solvents to extract the THC from the plant. There have been 10 recorded fires or explosions at facilities in the past five years. Everyone's talking about the increased local tax revenues from these businesses, but these are only temporary. These revenues are brought in from the impact fees negotiated in the host agreement, which can be up to 3% of wholesale sales for up to five years. After five years, there's no guarantee for additional revenue from these impact fees. With the recent mass land court ruling, future property tax revenue from these types of businesses is uncertain. Under the ruling, marijuana cultivating and manufacturing is considered agriculture, which means these businesses could make the case for agricultural property tax breaks, leaving communities with little and long-term property tax revenue. So I'm just asking to please vote yes on Articles 33 and 34 to limit these other types of marijuana businesses in Hanson to one. Thank you.
Ms. Benanato?
Benannato.
Benannato, thank you. I made a mistake. I should have insisted that you made the motion for Article 33 before your explanation. That's entirely on me. Everybody heard your explanation, which is great, but if you could please put Article 33 into the form of a motion?
I motion to vote on Article 33.
Actually, I think, here, if you have the language right there, if you could say, I move to see if, and then read the motion.
Okay. I move to see if the town will vote to amend the Town of Hanson zoning bylaws by amending Section 6 Subsection M marijuana establishments to limit the number of marijuana establishments to one in the Town of Hanson. Marijuana establishments include the following types of businesses: marijuana cultivation, marijuana testing facilities, marijuana product manufacturing, or other types of licensed marijuana-related business.
Do we have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded. So the motion is now before town meeting, and we've had the explanation, but if anybody else would like to speak to this article, please do. Yes, sir?
Steve Smith, Monroe Street. Both the board and FinCom did not recommend, and I'd like to ask some clarification on the claims that were just made about the finances, as well as pretty much all of that.
Mr. Sullivan?
Sure. These are legitimate businesses. They will continue to provide revenue to the town. That can fluctuate, but they will continue to provide revenue. This is a source of revenue just like any other business in town. They will not be exempt from taxes. They will pay to the town. So that's not true, that they will not pay any revenue.
And I do think it's important to note that in our host community agreement with Impressed LLC, we specifically have language in there that does not allow them to flip and request an agricultural exemption. It's very specific. They'd be in breach of the contract if they did that.
Yes, sir. Would you like to just state your name, please?
Paul Benannato, 72 Brookside Drive. I'm also asking for a yes vote on Article 33 and 34. Many people, this is, many people in Hanson are not just really worried about the tax, potential tax revenue. We've debated that in nauseam in the past. But looking back in history, you have tobacco, alcohol industry, the lottery. Those never turn out very good for the taxpayers with debate. There's also the environmental impacts. Also, you know, people are very worried about the marijuana environment, the legal marijuana environment coming to town. If you look at the 6th Plymouth District, our district, Pembroke and Ducksbury, they didn't vote for this, and they don't want that environment in their towns. Also, you look at the lack of infrastructure that Hanson has in energy, water, sewer. What kind of a strain would several marijuana cultivators, manufacturers, and testing facilities have on an already arguably stressed system? Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Steve Smith again. I'd also like to ask through you, moderator, somebody from the Water Department to make any validation of the claim about the threat to the aquifer.
Is anybody here from the Water Commission that can speak to that? Mr. Howard?
My understanding is that they have a closed system.
Dot Howard, 860 Winter Street in Hanson. I haven't really studied this, but I also want to know on the discharge of the water into the aquifer that we have our wells on. I don't know if there's any research been done on that.
They are not permitted to do that, Mr. Howard. They are not permitted to do that, and they will be trucking in their water. So it's a closed system. They will not be dumping there. This is a highly regulated industry, highly regulated, like nothing I've ever seen. And so there are Department of Public Health and Cannabis Control Commission, I mean, ad nauseam types of regulations. If we can debate whether there should be more or not, that's a different discussion. But to answer your question, sir, they will, this particular company that we have granted the host community agreement, entered into that with them, they will not be dumping water into the aquifer. And they are not going to be drawing off of Hanson's water because they're trucking in their own water.
Thank you. I knew the answer. I just wanted it said out loud. One moment, Mr. Howard. Oh.
I was just commenting. Thank you. I knew the answer. I just wanted it said out loud.
Mr. Howard?
Yes, sir. They're going to truck in the water, then they're also going to collect the discharged water and haul it out of town?
Yes.
That's correct.
Yes.
So that there'll be no water going into the aquifer where we now have our four wells up there?
That's correct. They're very, very aware of the sensitive nature of that area, and they opted at a great expense to have a tight system, as I just mentioned. But just to kind of level set, we're not really talking about Impressed LLC. We are having hearing on that on the 15th, by the way. But we did enter into a host community agreement with... Tonight is about whether or not we want to have zoning that will prohibit any other marijuana establishments from locating in what we've already zoned as the only area in town that you can locate, which is the industrial park. That's really what, well, at least the first article is about.
All right. A follow-up?
Yes, through you to the board. Are there any other industries in town that are restricted to a total monopoly of one in any other industry where we would say, you can only have one of this thing?
Not that I'm aware of, sir.
So why are we doing that to this industry?
That's a good point, Mr. Armstrong.
Mr. Armstrong, you know better. You should come to the microphone. Yes, ma'am?
That too would be in the industrial zone.
Molly Gadel, 48th Quantum Avenue. We spoke earlier this evening about another proposal that goes into great detail on the process of applying for one of these apparently coveted positions in town. Are you under some obligation to, just for clarification, are you under some obligation to accept any application of a marijuana industry-related business that wants to take up residence in our town?
Ms. Fitzgerald, Kement.
We are under no obligation.
So in that case, my question to the town is...
Point of order, Mr. Moderator. Is this related to the article? We keep sort of circling back to...
No, I think it is relevant. So if you could please follow up.
I'm trying to make a statement of against this article because it's my opinion that we want to invest in schools, we want to develop our infrastructure. All of these things require money, and we also are unwilling to allow them to continue to raise our property taxes. At a certain point, I think we need to really take a hard look at our town and say, are there businesses pounding down our door to take up residence here? And if the marijuana industry thinks that this could be a potential match and we can have a mutually beneficial relationship, then I think that it's worth considering on an individual basis going forward and not putting out a blanket rule in advance that limits us to potential revenue, potential business, potential foot traffic that will then frequent other businesses in our town. And I think that the comparison to tobacco, the lottery, and to alcohol is unfounded because none of those things are currently available by prescription from a doctor. So that's just my statement.
Thank you. Mr. Clemmons?
Two points. One is I heard something tonight I don't think I've ever heard before. I went to the public presentations by the incoming company, and I heard very clearly how they would plan to provide their own incoming potable water, if you will, to the process by a tank or truck. What I don't remember hearing is any plan for them to capture the effluent, the outgoing water, the wastewater, if you will. That's new information to my ears.
That's required under the regulations, sir.
Capture in what way? Don't they all have septic systems at that facility, as most people do in the town of Hanson?
Yeah.
No, I am, I'm simply trying to be clear that we understand the type of business because if one business does it one way, so will probably the next and the next. I just don't believe I have heard anything about the effluent being captured, other than to go into a septic system, which goes into groundwater, hopefully will be attenuated. But I was on the first aquifer protection committee in this town about 30 years ago, and that was the first area we protected. Just a point of information for everyone. The other thing is incoming water. It's not like it doesn't come from the town. It just comes from a different aquifer in the town. The supplier that they're dealing with has a permit to withdraw water, groundwater from around Indian Head Pond, which is in the Indian Head Brook Aquifer. And so every gallon of water that leaves there does not benefit the environment in that other area. So no question about it. The industry as a whole is, there's a certain amount of environmental impact, and I just want to make sure that we understand that clearly.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to point out one thing is that by passing a law like this, all we're doing is saying that there can be no others except for the one that's already here. And if we got a better deal a year from now where another company came in and they were offering significantly more than what we currently have, we're locked into the one because we've tied our hands and the board is not able to negotiate a better deal with another company. There's nothing saying that if another company comes in that we have to allow them. There's nothing saying that if another company comes in and they're giving us a terrible deal and they want to destroy our ecology, the environment, sorry. There's nothing saying that we have to let that company come in. We can vote on that later. This just simply says there can be only one, and it prevents us from even considering the option later.
Mr. Edgell?
Where is town council on this? You allow one business and no other business will come in? What's the finding with county council on this?
Sir, this was not proposed by the selectmen. This was proposed by a petitioner.
Oh, hold on. Order. 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 I'll wake up your baby. I can do it. Yeah, to answer your question, I think town council is willing to speak, but this was not proposed by any town official. So I don't believe you reviewed this, right?
So keeping it in the framework of whether or not this article is legally permissible, is that your question?
Correct.
So the way the law reads 94G is that you can set limitations on the marijuana industry by bylaw. And you can do that by general bylaw or by zoning bylaw. What it does require is that if you set certain limitations, it triggers a ballot vote in addition to the town meeting vote. This is not one of those enumerated circumstances which triggers a ballot vote because those include regulating below 20% of retail establishments to 20% of liquor establishments or basing it on medical marijuana treatment centers, those kinds of ties. Other communities have set limits on these other type of marijuana industries, so the non-retail, the more passive industries. And they have been approved by the Attorney General's Office. So it is permissible, but whether or not it's the appropriate policy for the town, that's up for this legislative body. The one kind of, I guess, it's not a deficiency, but the one thing that concerned me about the way the article was worded is it doesn't carve out retailers. So it could be construed, if you're reading it very conservatively, to wrap retailers in this limitation. That said, the way we generally interpret statutes and bylaws is we read them together and try to make some sense of it. So I think with the retail prohibition that's already in place, this one would still remain permissible because you read them together. So whether or not it's appropriate is up for you to decide. And one other thing, on the, I'm sorry. I love talking about marijuana. On the wastewater, it's my recollection that Impressed LLC did have a closed system. They were recycling their water in their cultivation facility. They will, of course, have a toilet for their employees, which would naturally go into the septic, but that's just for normal use. The discharge of the water into any system is very highly regulated by the Cannabis Control Commission, and they test for all kinds of contaminants. So in that sense, it would be a safe discharge if any were made in any future companies.
I just want to point out that BU Law School now has a whole course on cannabis. It's true. I mean, this is, talk about a growth industry. Ms. Benedetta?
Benannato. I just wanted to explain to that gentleman down there, he said, what if we got a better offer next year? Well, actually, the offer that we have from Impressed LLC is the maximum that the town can collect in that... can collect, and that's 3% impact fee on their sales of their revenue. And it's only up to five years. That's what the Cannabis Control Commission website says. Host agreements are only valid, and they can only be enforced up to five years. So it's all negotiable, that additional revenue that the town would get. That's not guaranteed, and it does expire after five years. And then the other point I wanted to make was over the summer at our, one of the board of selectmen meeting where we actually, as citizens, got to ask questions of both the board and Impressed LLC, we posed the question to legal counsel, you know, why did Hanson have to sign this agreement with Impressed LLC? And the answer was that we could be sued as a town if we didn't sign this agreement. That was the impression.
We'll get a clarification on that.
No, no, no. And I clearly remember that question being asked, and I think there was a misimpression that the town is obligated to sign an HCA, and I turned my back, I remember this clearly, because I turned my back, I was sitting down, and I said, there's absolutely no obligation on the board of selectmen to sign an HCA. There's no obligation. It's a discretionary executive function. So absolutely not.
Well, then there was quite a bit of public outcry that night, and the, the reaction from the board was, well, we've already considered Impressed LLC, and we're already going forward with the host agreement.
And again, you know, I think we are getting a little far afield. I mean, we're not relitigating in President, this is on your motion to limit to one. Yes, sir. If we could just wrap this up.
Yeah. Patrick Powers, 255 Holm Street. It seems to me the folks that submitted this article clearly aren't happy with what happened with the Impressed LLC, and I understand that. But now in stating that we had a townwide vote to ban certain things like recreational sales and whatnot, now they're putting forth two articles that don't go to town ballot. That seems to be an issue with me. If we are going to decide as a town, it would seem to me to be proper to have something put forth, either held or vote both of these down, to come back at a time where we could go to town ballot and let the town decide, as opposed to 115 to 117 people making the decision for our entire town. On top of that, we've got, we're submitting it to one establishment, potentially, again, to the gentleman in front's statement, a monopoly, right? So, and lastly, to reiterate, there is no obligation for the board of selectmen to sign any of these things that come forward. So by not passing this, it's not like we're going to have 15 of these places knocking down our door. We don't even have a current applicant in our town through the CCC right now in the state. It's not like we say, oh, let's, let's not pass this, and then next thing we know, marijuana trucks are going to come shipping through our town. That doesn't happen. It's not logical. My personal recommendation would be to hold off on this until we can actually send it to the town to vote, especially since the folks who are proposing this repeatedly, over and over and over again in their arguments through the open community meetings, the board of selectmen meetings, even here tonight, have said we've decided on these things through town vote. We should stay consistent with that, as opposed to trying to sneak something through, through this. Thanks.
Mr. Weeks.
Joe Weeks, 83 Hancock Street. That was pretty much what I was going to say. So what I want to say really quickly is, I just would like to caution people again about making a vote on something where you don't know the unintended consequences of what that vote might be. I think we have boards, committees, and many fine people looking at this that are going to properly vet this issue, and I don't think we should just make a decision on the fly at town meeting floor. So thank you.
All right. I, all right. Yes, please. One moment, you know, I know the hour's growing late, but I always like to see new people speaking at town meetings, so please.
Super quick. Amanda Rubens, 304 Reed Street. Having just one, so I heard it said what's not guaranteed is the revenue after five years. Well, what is absolutely guaranteed, if you only let one in, is that there will be no more revenue, no new revenue. That's, I mean, by limiting it to one, that's all you can do. You can't get any new revenue.
All right. Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you. I'm Benjamin Fletcher, 30 High Street. My name is the one that's on this, this proposal. Excuse me. The reason why this proposal is here today is because the original ballot question, the sample ballot question was for marijuana establishments, and somehow it got changed to recreational marijuana retailers, thus resulting in all of this what we're experiencing today. So I'm for taking another public vote because the people who signed this were, were under the impression that it was to ban marijuana out of the town completely. And now, lo and behold, we even go into community outreach meetings trying to find out how this came about and why we're in the position that we're in today. So with that, thank you.
A final comment, Ms. Benonato.
Can I make a motion to amend this article and take a vote later at, to hold the article as a ballot vote?
You're looking to amend this so that it would go to the voters at an election. We wouldn't be able to do that. Let me just say, the, the proper time for that is at the May town meeting because the election is part of the town meeting. We don't have an election currently scheduled. So the proper time, my understanding, Madam Clerk, would be to bring this up in May to go to the voters.
So are you looking to pass over the vote to push it to May, to bring it back in May, is that what you mean?
Yeah. And I'm also told by town council that I wouldn't be able to permit it on town meeting floor to add a ballot question. Nobody in town was on notice that that was an aspect of the article.
So if we motion to amend this article and postpone a vote till the May town meeting?
We could pass over these two articles if you would like.
And then how do we get it back onto the May?
You, the same process that you took for tonight.
Okay.
Or we could proceed to a vote.
Let's just vote, then.
All right. I, I think it's, Mr. Edgill, do you have something new?
I'm going home, really. Listen, why don't we just pass over this instead of voting? Like he said, it says you only have 100 people or something. Put this to the ballot. Let the whole town do it. Pass over this, and they can go through the process.
I, I, you know, I, your point is well taken, but I just asked one of the, one of the sponsors. Again, this did not come from any town official. It came by petition, and that's perfectly legitimate. If they want to take a vote tonight, then we should take a vote tonight, in my opinion. Yes, sir.
Ben Fletcher, High Street. Yeah, I would like to see this passed over, if at all possible. Thank you.
Okay. If you have a motion to pass over, then all those in favor to pass over, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it. Article 33 is passed over. Mr. Fletcher, do you or someone else have a motion to do the same for Article 34? You're on that, Mr. Benonato. Benonato, my goodness. I am so sorry. Mr. Fletcher.
Yes, I will put a motion in for Article 34 to be passed over.
Seconded. All those in favor of passing over Article 34 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 34 is passed over. I now adjourn the special town meeting. Sin die. Five minutes.
My first one under the devil.